In the order, in the meeting to order, please stand for the fudge and remember to put your cell phones on silent, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is Reverend Dan Phillips here? Thank you, sir. If you'd go up to the microphone, he's going to say our invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, may I say to you, remember a few weeks ago, we shared in Vice President Biden's grief in the loss of his son. And Vice President Biden said, he was told by his father, the measure of a person's success is how their children turned out, and if their children turned out better than them, ladies and gentlemen, my prayer, my desire, is for each and every one of you to be the most successful board members, educators, members of Putnam County, that God can enable you to be. One measure of that, about 15 years ago, I'd come back to Palatka, had gone to lunch at Golden Corral, and I saw a gentleman that I remembered, sitting at Jane's table. And I walked up to Jane and I said, is that Bill Thomas? She said, that's my dad. I said, may I go by and say hello to him? And she said, his vision's not, not what it used to be. He probably will not recognize you. I said, I just want to say hello to Mr. Thomas. Ladies and gentlemen, I had to stand in line to pay my respects and say hello to Bill Thomas. I hope people stand in line to tell you what impact you had on them and their children in our county. Father, we thank you for this meeting and these people that are here. We thank you, Father, for the desire and the love in their heart and the commitment they have to be in the position that they have to lead the educators, those that support our educational system, to work with our young people and our children, to prepare countless young people to go into a world that'll be hostile towards them, that might not be that agreeable to them, but to prepare them to go in with the best training and education they can achieve to be successful. And Father, I pray for these people, and I pray that they are successful each and every day. I pray, Father, that you send other teachers and other educators to our county, and that, Father, we're not going to be the county that probably spends the most money, we're not going to be the county that draws the most students and the most wonderful athletes, but Father, may we be the county in our state that everybody knows, not only do we care for our young people and their training, not only do we love our young people in our school system, but Father, we want them and we will prepare them to be as successful as they can, to be people, men and women of integrity, to go into this world. Guide them, Father, in all that they say and all that they do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. Board members, our first order of business, Terry Wright is asking that he attend remotely, participate, and vote at the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to allow it.
I move that we allow Mr. Wright to attend and vote over the phone.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second on the floor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Harry's five zero. Terry? Hello, Terry? Hey, Terry, okay, we're just starting the minute, meeting now. You've been approved to participate.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Terry, this is Charlie Douglas. If for some reason you cannot hear any information that is being discussed at the meeting, please say something so that we can be confident that you have all the information necessary to inform your decision and participate in a meaningful vote. Are you able to do that?
Yes, absolutely, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. We're going to be deleting Putnam County School Board Policy 136202. Anybody have anything to say about this? I'll entertain a motion.
I move we delete it.
Second.
There's a motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Five zero. Next is the public hearing on the amendment of Putnam School Board Policies 1362, 3362, 4362, 5517, and 5517.01.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve those amendments.
I second it.
Motion and second on the floor, any discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Harry's five zero. That moves us on to the public comment guide portion of the meeting. I have no cards, so I assume there's no members of the public that wish to address the board at this time. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anyone in the audience who would like to remove any items from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Board members, Mr. Wright?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
None?
None.
I have D8, E5, E7, F1, F2, F3, and G2.
Hang on, I need to, can you?
D8, E5, E7, F123, and G2.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the said items.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Harry's five zero. First item I pulled was item D8. It's a contract with Mr. Albany's to work with district-wide band programs. It's a $27,000. I know how everybody loves Mr. Albany's. This isn't about Mr. Albany's to me. It's not a personal thing. It's we just sent band, a band out of here that didn't have uniforms because we didn't want to spend any money on band, and now there's $27,000 going to Mr. Albany's that I know everybody loves. I know he's a great user teacher. I just wanted to make sure we all know what we're doing here when we spend this $27,000 on our bands.
Madam Superintendent, would you mind telling me exactly what he does? Does he work with all three bands?
This was a position I inherited from the previous superintendent who put this into place, and it comes to you every year, and I'll do whatever you want me to do. It's fine with me. He, he makes sure that they have training. He trains them himself.
Trains who?
The band directors. He helps them schedule students for participation in different competitions. He communicates with Troy, Alabama, and other places so that he can get the bands to go and be able to participate in the competition. He gets scholarships for students. He does a lot of things that our younger band directors have not had experience with, and has been training them in that manner for a couple of years now, and certainly, whatever the board's desire is, is fine with me.
What is your rec, what is your recommendation?
To do it.
To do it.
Well, on the agenda, that's totally up to you. The band directors have really appreciated his help because certainly he can do the things they don't have time to do because they're teaching during the day, and then they, they do the band practice and everything in the afternoon. And certainly, I'm sure every group out there would like to have somebody like Mr. Albany's because he is so wonderful and was well-known, you know, in Interlock and for the, the things that he did with the band, took them even to England. So his expertise and knowledge has truly helped them. But again, it was just something that was started before I got here, and I've just continued to bring it to you.
I understand that. I, I would like to hear from each of the three band teachers.
We also have the middle school band directors that he works with.
Yeah, I would like to hear from each of them, what he actually has done. I mean, is there a way we can table this?
Absolutely, certainly.
Oh, sure, just make a motion to table.
Just make a motion to table.
I'm not sure I know how to say it.
Just say, I make a motion to table item number D8.
I make a motion to table number item D8.
Second.
It's a motion and second on the floor to table this item until we can get more information from the band directors at our middle and high schools.
Would you like me to have them to come to the July meeting or just send either that or send an email?
Why don't you just email them and ask them and then?
Let them put it in writing to you.
Maybe your office can get everything together to send one thing out to us so that we've got it in one spot.
Okay.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much. Did we vote? No, we didn't vote, did we? No. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this item. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Next is change order number eight, administration building renovations. Would you explain that, Scott? I just looked at it and didn't understand. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. It's really just a closeout change order, good afternoon, by the way. It's really just a closeout change order for the project. We returned some unused direct purchase and associated sales tax, and then we had a couple little loose things at the end to finish up the project. So that's what that is. Most of it's direct purchase return.
So it's done now as far as money?
Yes, ma'am. Other than the pay rec and getting paid, which is also on the agenda for approval, the final billing.
Yes.
Incorporates that change order and then.
I mean, after today, we're done.
It's retainage only, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
We're done, good. Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve. I just had that question.
Second.
Make a motion?
She made a motion.
I can't make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, change order number eight.
Second.
Motion second on the floor, any further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Harry's five zero. E7, I have heard enough flack about this building that I am not voting to spend 3.5 million dollars on a maintenance facility. That's me, and get mad at me. I want to see us buy some computers with that money first.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item E7.
Is there anyone else who'd like to discuss it?
Well, they, after you get a motion and second.
I second it for discussion.
There's a motion and second on the floor to approve. Anybody else like to say anything? Terry?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say that 3.5 million is a, is a high number. I sure would like to see that drop about 10 or 15% and have a do not exceed as part of the contract.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And, you know, so, so, I mean, because we're just not going to get into inflating change orders and stuff, we're just, I can't do it. And so, and so we're going to have to see that dropped, I think, about 10% and a do not exceed. And I'm sure there are people out there smart enough to get that done. That's just a lot of money.
I just need to remind the board that the transportation facility we currently inhabit does not belong to us anymore. The previous administration sold it to the Palatka Housing Authority, and they have asked me several times when, when we'll be moving out. So we do have to do something, just so you know.
When do we have to be out?
I'm not, I don't have any problem with doing something, and I think this is the right thing in the right place. I just think the cost is too much. And I'd like to see, you know, I, I would love to workshop it. I would love to see if we can value engineer this thing and give a do not exceed. That's, that's my two cents. I'm all for doing it, but, but I'd like to see us, you know, you know, for me, I would just like to have a little bit firmer grip on the cost if, if we could. So that's my two cents.
Okay, I happen to agree with you completely, Terry. I'd like to see a workshop also, but we do have a motion and second on the floor unless you're willing to withdraw it, to table this item perhaps and workshop it.
Well, we have a packet, and we've been talking about this for at least five years.
I haven't.
Is it something that you can go back to your contractor and say, we don't, you know, we want to negotiate a price, or do we have to start the process all over?
We've already negotiated a contract. This is actual cost plus the contractual allowed general conditions and fee.
Right, so you've done RFP.
This is a guaranteed max price.
Right.
The project, we did an RFP, we're the construction manager, the construction manager bid the project out. This is their guaranteed max price. While I'd agree with Mr. Wright, I wouldn't say it seems high. The market is coming back. The industry is recovering. Like a lot of things, we can put it down the road, it's not necessarily going to get cheaper. In regards to value engineering, if I could just run through a couple of things with you real quick.
And I think, I think, Scott, one of the main issues is site preparation. That's where a million dollars will come in because we're, there are certain things we're required to do by law.
This, there's not.
And you have to pay for it. So if you would kind of explain that, and again, maybe a workshop is a good idea. The issue is maybe time constraints.
Did we not have a max thing on this building?
Guaranteed max price, yes, ma'am, we did.
Then it went up 1.5 after that.
No, ma'am, it did not. It went down for direct purchase reductions.
No, 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 it was, it, no, we needed a roof and something else.
Well, you're, you're right. We, we did do additional work to this building that we initially did not budget. I think.
So the same thing could happen with this building?
No, ma'am. This is a brand-new, out-of-the-ground, complete facility. Everything shown on the drawings is included in the guaranteed max price. Ms. Chriswell is exactly right. Just the site work's close to a million dollar. There's barely a foot around the edge of the property line that we're not touching. Everything else is either building, parking, or retainage. There really is no undisturbed property on this site. I would say that we've ground on the value engineering idea to the point where there's really no meat left on the bones. For this project, just as an example, we could use half-inch drywall in lieu of 5/8s drywall and save some money. In this project, it's a parking lot and it's a pre-engineered metal building. Unless we don't pave part of the site, or we don't put a roof on the building, there's really nothing to value engineer in this. There's no fancy finishes. There's really nothing in it, like I said, other than the structure and the site work.
So the roof will be included and the AC and all that?
Yes, ma'am. Now, I will say that there is a contingency in this. Given any major site work project like this, there's over $100,000 in unforeseen conditions for soils. We did our best, which is an industry standard, to go out, do soil borings, determine what's underneath the ground, but until you get out there and scratch it all off, you don't know every square foot what's there. So there is $100,000 contingency in this project for unsuitable soils. If we get into an area that we didn't touch in the soil boring, and there's unsuitable soils there, there's already money in the project for that. That is the district's money.
Will they be assessed liquidated damages if they don't finish it within that cost range?
Well, they're required per the contract to finish it for the guaranteed max price. Liquidated damages come into play when they go beyond their contractual scheduled date. That's when liquidated damages come in. But they're obligated to provide everything that's in the plan of specs for, per the GMP, the guaranteed max price.
So metal buildings just cost that much?
I think the metal building alone is almost $700,000.
So.
And the property preparation is a million.
It's the site, and that includes paving, storm drainage, the retention, stripping, clearing.
So it's the 1.7 that's left, a million for the property and then seven?
There's about a 5,000-square-foot buildout, I'll call it a buildout, inside of the pre-engineered metal building, which is the administration area of the transportation facility.
From millions, 1.7.
Well, that includes everything else, site concrete, there's, there's other things in that that go with that. Utilities, this is a sprinkled building. Unlike a lot of things that we don't have now, this is a fully sprinkled building. That's some of this cost. There's a detailed breakdown in the GMP. It goes line item by line on, it spells out everything that's in this project.
It's fine. I'd like to see it. I'd like to ask accounting, finance, if you know how much we generally have coming into this account each year that we can spend. I, I know this is categorical money, and we can only spend it on, well, we can't spend it on building. How are we doing this without PICO money?
Well, this is a PICO money. A lot of this money.
No, I know it's not PICO money. We can't, what is it? Because it's affordable.
Hang on one second.
I know here we did renovations, so we could use that money.
Well, capital, isn't capital outlay for construction, renovation, and purchase of property?
A lot of this is old capital improvements money, '09, '10.
It's money that's been set aside in the capital improvements funds that hasn't been used currently, so he's already had discussions with the audit to make sure that we could afford the costs, and there is money set aside from this year and also there will be additional next year.
Right, so there's just some from this year that was left that we didn't spend on this building in that account. I'd still like to see us buy computers with some of this money. Categorical is for computers, and I'd like to see, I'd like to, I've gotten another call this week from a parent, why doesn't my child have a computer? So.
Well, we're not required by the Department of Education yet to have a computer for every child, and we are working on that. Charles Jenkins currently is, is our Director of Technology. He is in Tallahassee at the moment for a meeting with our data people. He'll be back Thursday. Certainly, he can be at the next meeting to answer. He has purchased lots of, hundreds of computers for our students, and we have them color-coded. We'll be giving them out, high school, middle school, elementary school. The state also has, in this budget year, when they haven't given us a budget yet, are also debating on how much money to give school districts, what the base allocation is going to be for computers, which, it's not just computers, it's your infrastructure as well, because that's very important, especially in a rural county. And so, 250,000 is what they had talked about. That's what they gave us last year. We spent that on computers. It doesn't buy 10,000, which is the number of students we have. This year, they're, they are, the Senate and the House have been arguing about doing 500,000 for districts as the base allocation, and then a per pupil amount on top of that. So they are making provisions to purchase computers. We, we do have technology dollars that will be doing that. We also have grant dollars that we've purchased. What we're trying to do is get away from some of the iPads and the MacBooks that were purchased because they are not cost efficient and technologically not the best thing for the students. We're going to Chromebooks, which are about $200 a piece when we order in bulk, and it's better for the students. And the plan is to start at high school, give them to the ninth graders, and they keep them all four years, and at the end of that four years, they get to take them with them. So we have a technology plan in place, and we are getting there. It's not going to happen overnight. When the computers come in, we have to do inventory on them, and then we also have to engrave them. We can't just put a sticker on because what we've determined is when you put a serial number and a sticker to identify the school and the student, people pull them off. So now we've gone to engraving, which takes time. So I can't order 10,000 computers and get them out right away anyway. So it's a, there's a process to it, and we have a plan, and Charles can explain it to you, either in workshop session or at the next meeting, whatever you prefer.
One way or the other, I would like a report from Charles. I'm talking about 3.8 million dollars in this categorical. You're talking about a whole nother allocation that we get, 250,000 for computers. I'm talking 3 million here. The ninth graders is fine, but you're not, I don't know if you're getting, I'm going to send the pa, I'm going to tell the parents, call Ms. Chriswell, and she'll tell you when your child is going to be a ninth grader.
Well, certainly our capital outlay dollars, Scott knows, I mean, he's, he has great certification. I have great confidence in his ability, and the more money he saves in each project, the more projects we can do. We have other things we need to do. We purchased property in Interlock and to build a new transportation facility out there to get it off of Interlock and High School. I can't do that if I don't have money. We need to build our own warehouse because right now we're paying $4,000 a month to rent a warehouse, and that money doesn't stay in Putnam County. It goes to the, an owner who is outside the state of Florida. So there are other building projects that we would like to do, and certainly, if we don't spend any more money than we absolutely have to, it's not like we're going out and trying to find the highest bidder. We, we have a process that the state makes us follow, and that's what we do. I, I don't know what to do in site preparation. We don't have a, we don't have a, anything that we can do about that, other than what we're told we have to do. I don't know how you get around it. I, I don't know. I really don't.
Hey, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, hey, here's, here's my issue. My issue's not with the building of the depot. I get, we have to do that because we're in somebody else's property right now. So, so that's not the issue. My issue is I need a do not exceed, and I know that's not an unusual request.
That is, it's a GMP estimate.
I need to, I need to know, we approve a 3.45 million dollar outlay, we're not going to have upcharges, upgrades, change orders, and all that, because I'm telling you, it drives me insane. So if I can get a do not exceed, I'll, I'll be inclined to support it. But without it, there's no way.
Mr. Wright, Scott says that this bid contains a do not exceed clause.
This is a guaranteed max price.
Okay, great, then, I'm happy as a clam. Thank you.
All right, Lawless, can we call for a vote?
Well, I just don't want anybody to think that, that any of us are out there just trying to spend lots of money. That's not the purpose.
You can call for a vote, I read that today.
I don't know how you.
This has been on the five-year plan for 20 years.
Jane, you're going to cut board members off from talking?
No, I didn't say that.
I, I guess my only concern is that all this was planned before I came on board. So I, you know, I don't even know what, all the three-point, whatever million's being spent on.
I would love to show you.
I mean, that's great, I don't know if now's the time, but.
Wait one second, Mr. Getchell, because you have given us, I mean, the RFP processes have been followed as state ordered. You have done hours and hours and hours of work. We have a 22-page, very detailed proposal by RFP, by a certified contractor. It's in our board packet. It is in our board packet. If you didn't read it, I'm sorry, but we don't need a workshop and idea when we have all the information presented before us. If someone has a specific question, then I would say go to Mr. Getchell, but I have all the information. If you want to know how much plumbing, $100,000, electrical, $100,000, I mean, it's laid out that clearly. So I'm asking, please, let's call for a vote.
I know, I went out with Scott, and we met with the sheriff, and we got permission to run a line across their property, and we've been doing this for a few years. My concern was like Terry's concern, I don't want to get into it, but if there's a guaranteed maximum figure, I'm ready to call for the question and let's see who supports it and who doesn't.
I'll just get right over this somehow. Well, we've got Mr. Buckles wanting to call for the question, so I'm going to cut off discussion and call the question.
I said all I needed to say.
Okay, Mr. Wright, do you have anything else to say?
Nope, I'm good.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. No. Harry's four one. Item F1.
Sorry, hit the wrong thing here.
Like the music.
F1 is the personnel allocations change, and I, I thought that we had one teacher, one secretary, and two aides at Solution Center, because we added, but it doesn't show up.
They're under A H M L.
Uh-huh.
They're there this year.
I know, but I still only saw one aide.
There's two.
Okay, as long as you're telling me there's two, but I only saw one. Let me go to the, excuse me for just a moment, I'm sorry.
Get by the agenda.
What are you looking for?
The agenda.
Oh.
If you need a stamp or not.
We currently have one teacher that's already in place, one paraprofessional that's already in place, and one that they can allocate that Ms. P. Os will have the opportunity to hire for.
Good.
Plus the secretary, Wendy.
She's still there.
So there should be four.
He wants what? Why'd he put them over here?
Okay. Okay, I don't see Wendy on there. That was my problem. I only, there she is. Well, it says teacher, data entry, got it. I'm very sorry, thank you very much. There are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item F1.[1711.54]
I'll second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion, Mr. Wright?
Nope, I'm good.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Carrie's five-one. Um, I pulled the financial statement. No, that's budget amendments. Because when I looked it over, um, the school board has a budget of a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars and I know we don't spend that. I've asked a couple of times for a run of that account to see what comes out of the school board account. Do we spend a hundred-and-fifty thousand? That's what our budget is.
I believe it's risk management too. Isn't it Nefect that money comes part of our risk management?
I've asked for about nine months now, I've been asking and asking, not you, so now I'm asking you.
It's not uncommon to pad a budget like a super, like a superintendent's budget or a school board budget in case a project like the band uniforms or instruments or something came up that you really can't foresee and it's a lot easier than trying to do budget amendments than it, you know, to, to swap funds around at those times of year. And Shannon, I know you, you know more about this than I do. So, anyway, that's why it's probably been.
We swap funds around almost every meeting.
Right.
Um, I just don't like, if somebody comes up to me and says, hey, what do you guys do with a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars every year? What do I say? It's a slush fund? It's a secret? I mean.
I mean, things like insurance rest in the board's account, things like the insurance payments all rest in the board's account. Things like, um, there are just other things that even though Sharon keeps the books on that for, for us as we spend, you know, whatever we spend for y'all or for our department, there are, there are, there are objects that we never touch because that's where Rhonda puts.
Right, and I guess my request is that you put it somewhere else. I'm serious. If some, if one of my constituents asks me what, what do we spend a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand a year, the five of us on? I don't know what to say. I understand what you're saying, but I don't know how to say that. There's accounts in there that they're going to use that have nothing to do with the board.
And actually, that's true because there are, there are.
I know.
A few little objects that, that y'all spend money out of or we spend money out of.
I know. And it just concerns me the way it looks. If somebody goes online and looks at our budget and it says the superintendent spends a quarter of a million and we spend a hundred-and-fifty, and I understand what our budgets are for.
Have you ever been asked about it before? I mean, one of your constituents, have they asked you about?
Not yet, no. I just want to be, I would like to either be prepared to answer it.
I mean, you are the board and you are paying the bill of the district basically, so I think that's always been the thought, Rhonda.
Well, we pay all the bills.
Rhonda's given us printouts many times, many times.
Of this ca, of the board account?
Yes. She has provided that previously. Last year, a question came up and she gave it out. So, I know she's done it and she's got copies of it. I'm sorry, she's not here. She's also at a finance conference this week, but certainly she can explain to you and give you dates at the next meeting.
I can bring the, the videotapes of our meetings where I've requested it and I haven't gotten anything.
All I know is she has told me she's given you printouts. I, I don't know what to tell you. She's not here.
Well, we just need to follow up. If we don't get it in what we think is a timely manner, just call and ask for it.
I have, I have. Um, I'll do it again. I'll do it by certified mail return receipt requested. Well, if necessary, I will and then I want to.
Kathy, I will send you a detailed report.
I know, I've been told that before, but I, fine, I would appreciate it.
Rhonda did say that she has sent them in the past, but I will make sure.
I haven't seen it.
Can I call for the question?
What question?
Uh, we going, we need to make a motion?
David wants to call for the question again. I know, but he's calling.
Well, we, we just, I just would like to call for a vote.
Well, we don't have a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, the item, it's number, was it number two?
F-two.
F, F-two financial statement for May 2015.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Wright?
No, I'm good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's five-zero. Next item of the budget amendments for May 2015. I went online this afternoon and looked at the functions in the red book and we are taking two-hundred thousand dollars out of motor vehicles and moving it around and I'm wondering how we're doing that. We're adding a hundred-and-three thousand to interest and adding almost a hundred thousand to depreciation and those don't show up on the original because those are within the general fund. So, they are on page three or four, just moving around. We're not adding any money to the general fund or taking any money out of the general fund, but we're saying we're not spending this two-hundred thousand there, we're moving it over here, et cetera, et cetera. I just wanted to point that out to the board since you do read your pockets that you need to look at that general fund operating page and see all the increases and decreases going on. If you can.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item F-three.
Second.
Um, can I ask, do you know what the hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand coming out of autos is? You probably don't.
Where do you, in the sixty-five? The net, basically, there's only a net increase in there and that's a four-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy.
Do you understand what I'm saying? We approve a budget. We say we're going to give this much here and this much there and then it gets all changed around during the year.
Because there's different needs and we're able from object three-hundred and higher, which I mean, it's like purchase services, capital outlay, things like that, utilities, we're able to move that money around in the general fund as we see needed.
With board approval. That's why it's here be, before us.
Right.
And I just.
But I was just trying to bring to your attention that the net change in the general.
I understand that.
Less than five thousand dollars.
The net change sometimes is zero, but we're moving around hundreds of thousands of dollars that when we saw a budget, we saw this and then by the end of the year, the budget could be completely different if we don't just keep our eye on it. I'm just talking to the board, not to you. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve that item.
I made a motion. And a second.
Okay, all those in favor. Terry, do you have anything else to say?
Aye.
He said aye.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Aye, 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 five-zero Carrie's. All right. Item G-two, approval of personnel matters. Apparently, I've been told it was an oversight, but back in June of last year, the requirement that our director of finance be a CPA was removed and only the board can determine job qualifications. The board does allocations, how many, and qualifications. Job description is Phyllis's department in running everything, but job qualifications is us and allocations. And our job qual, qualification said CPA, that was removed. Nothing personal. Shannon was moved up, who doesn't have a CPA. It's on our agenda today because our auditor found it. No, it was an oversight, we're told, and the oversight wouldn't have even been picked up with that old auditor. I'm just bringing it up. I'm going to vote no on this matter because I think we need more than one CPA in our district of a hundred-million-dollar budget.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Will you explain?
It was purely an oversight and I do appreciate that the board auditor did find the oversight. We had the incorrect title. The qualifications had come with the incorrect title. That was brought to our attention and is being brought back to you to correct our oversight. Not something that was done intentional. It was honestly just a mistake.
Thank you.
Motion is second on the floor, Mr. Wright. Any conversation?
No, I'm good. Yep.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. No. Four-one. I think that was my last one. Yep, okay, we're out of regular session and into emergency session. First item is after the fact approval of an overnight trip for Interlochen High School JROTC. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I move we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion is second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's five-zero. Next is Nefect out-of-state travel request for two individuals to attend AESA Foundation Summer Leadership Conference. Justification, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
So, second.
I move we approve and Ms. Cunningham seconded.
Second.
There's a motion and second on the floor. Any discussion, Mr. Wright?
No, I'm good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's five-zero. We're out of emergency session and back into regular session, folks. Moving right along. We have no old business to discuss new business. First item, discussion input and action on appointment of school board member and citizen to represent the school district on the Putnam County Value Adjustment Board. Any volunteers?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Cool.
I like doing it, so I'll be, I'll be glad to do it. I learn a lot on that, so I appreciate if the board would approve that, that'd be great.
Okay, you're appointed.
You're appointed. Thank goodness.
We approve.
Yes, Mr. Newfeld to do it again.
We'll let Jane Crawford be your backup instead of me this time.
Yeah, Jane needs to be the backup, absolutely.
Oh, this, you just say yes, 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 yes. Or no, 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 whichever one it is, nobody ever wins. The law prevails.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
You're welcome.
Okay, what about a citizen? Do we want to ask John Newfeld to do it again or somebody have somebody else in mind?
I'm not even sure what it is.
The Value Adjustment Board is where citizens go to ask the board about changing their taxes. They don't agree with their property tax assessment. And the law prevails and your tax assessor is going by the law. So.
I'm sure Jed's wonderful.
He, he does.
So, we would, do we have an alternative or just going to ask him and bring him back if he doesn't accept?
Yeah, I think if we ask him and bring him back if he says no, that it doesn't happen until like before.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, Pam, would you ask him for us? Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion and input on adding a portable, a portable at the CIO Overturf Junior Campus for Putnam Edge Charter School.
Oh, hey, wait a minute, Kathy, let me ask a question. Let me ask a question. So, so I was approved on, for the VAB?
You were appointed for the VAB.
Oh, man, awesome. Thank you.
Very welcome. Anytime.
Madam Chair, was there a motion and a second? Or was there a vote?
Do we need to?
I thought the chairman appointed, but if you want a motion and a second, we'll do it. In the past, I thought the chairman appointed, but that's fine. Motion and sec, we need a motion and a second. Just a motion, please.
Motion is two, Wright will be on the Value Adjustment Board.
And Jane?
Jane will be the backup.
And Jed Newfeld.
And Jed Newfeld will be contacted by Pam and if he rejects for any good reason, then we'll certainly look for someone else.
Second.
Really, do you have that? Good enough? Okay. Motion is second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's five-zero. Moving along. Discussion and input on adding a portable at the CIO Overturf Junior Campus for Putnam Edge Charter High School. Do we have a cost on that or they're, they're, they've agreed to pay any costs? So, there's not even a cost. Is there a reason? Anybody want to talk to us about it?
Hey, Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah, I just remember, you know, last meeting, uh, this was sort of brought up and, yeah, I don't have a problem with us putting it there as long as it's not, it's not going to be any cost to us, right? I mean, there's, it's a net zero for us, right?
Yeah, that's what Scott's going to talk to us now, Terry.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I wish Lisa was here. It's my understanding that Ed's just picking up all the cost. Um, we did do a little investigation on our end. Um, we do have capacity electrically at the end of building fourteen, an electrical room where they could tie right on, uh, fire alarm, intercom, same thing. It seems like a pretty straightforward process. Um, just put the portable in there and of course handicap ramps, um, that kind of stuff. It's at the end of building thirteen and fourteen near the group restroom, so this portable would not have bathroom facilities. So, it seems like a pretty straightforward endeavor. But again, it's my understanding, um, again, I wish Lisa was here, um, that Ed is picking up all costs.
Well, we can include that in a motion.
But isn't there three that they wanted? I mean, are we just approving one?
I think a lot of it has to do with their enrollment.
Just one.
Again, I wish that they were here.
She said at the last meeting that they, the office area they plan to use for students and the portable would be for their office and she only mentioned one and I don't think we have room for it.
Well, the letter said three. The letter did say three. That's why I was clarifying.
Three, but she, when she spoke, she talked about just one.
Correct.
Let's look.
What'd you say, Deborah?
There was one at the edge of the parking lot and then the one at the end of building four, but I think she dropped the one in the parking lot and we just.
No, we said we didn't want one in the parking.
That's correct.
We wouldn't want one there.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the one portable and that they bear the cost of the portable and, and the moving expenses and hooking up.
All expenses?
All expenses.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor that we approve. Item P-two, adding a portable at the CIO Overturf Junior Campus for Putnam Edge Charter School, providing Putnam Edge Charter School picks up all related expenses. Any further discussion?
I had one quick question for Mr. Chastain that we had, should have contacted him, but as far as the electrical bill, because we, we, uh, they were supposed to pay electric to us and water and we've not, to my knowledge, received any of that for the last couple of years. So, I did want that, um, addressed because that will be an ex, extra expense to us to add a new building and we are already paying their electrical and I would like to maybe, uh, bring that up at the next meeting because unless you have a figure.
Why are we paying all what they were?
That's negligible. It's demand, um. Go ahead.
No, their contract, it was, it was a flat rate. We negotiated with them when they moved in. Um, I guess I'd have to get with finance if we haven't been receiving a check or sending them an invoice.
We.
I don't know what the number was. It was fairly inexpensive.
I think it was five-hundred.
I'm thinking, I think it was a flat fee.
Five-hundred a month for utilities that we were supposed to get from them. Now, as, if we haven't gotten it, that's one thing, but the agreement I thought was we were supposed to be getting it.
Correct.
Right, so that to me would be important, so I just asked the finance.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I don't want to complicate things, but after Ed moves on to, uh, to a better spot for them, what happens to the portable?
Well, I have my idea, but I think you need to ask superintendent.
They take it with them.
Superintendent, what happens to the portable after they leave?
If they purchased it, they need to take it with them. It's not ours. If they purchase, they pay all expenses. We don't need it out there.
Uh, they're leasing it so they would.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we just probably need to make sure removal of it if, if that's your wishes. We just need to probably specify removal of that be, be understood as well.
I think that's a good idea. You want your motion to include expenses for removal? Mr. Buckles.
Motion to include expenses for removal.
Will you second that?
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and second on the floor to allow the portable, but Putnam Edge will be responsible for all expenses associated with bringing the portable in and taking it out when they leave. Any further discussion? That was good, Terry. Thanks for thinking of that.
And.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
I don't know how we would estimate the cost of a portable.
It, they, they.
To increase that. I'm talking about the electrical, the electric bill.
For one portable building?
Actually, running the air conditioning every day, eight hours.
Everything else is on energy management. Um, we would certainly put that, we would certainly put that on it now. Again, there, but you're right. Um, I don't know if there, we could figure out an additional fifty dollars a month, flat fee.
I just wanted to address that issue.
But yeah, I mean, it was, it's about a three-thousand, three-ton, which is about equivalent to the air conditioning in your house. So, you know, if that ran ungoverned.
Well, my bill is.
You'd rack up a pretty high bill, but you know, usually we're pretty good about energy management and.
That's a fortunate idea.
Five eighty? Okay.
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 Thanks.
Thank you.
I mean, don't we have like a hundred portables out there?
Yes, ma'am, we have a hundred and, we have a hundred and four. Now, now, we have them all on energy management, um, and if they were, if we didn't have a portable, and it was a, you know, a firm building, we would still have air conditioning costs, and so it's the fact that it's a portable doesn't really make it any lesser or more. Um, we'd be running the air anyway.
Right. No, I don't know if we'd be running the size that my house takes for one room, like we have to with the independent portable building, because you can't
It's just the size of the unit. I mean, your house may be bigger, but it probably has a two or three ton unit. Um, it just has to do with the heat load from students.
Okay, well, we do have a motion in a second, do we vote? Sharon? No, motion in second on the floor, I've repeated it enough times. Anybody have anything else to say, Mr. Wright?
No, I'm good.
Board? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Tarry's five zero. Last action on our discussion agenda is discussion input in, and action for board to issue a request for proposal for position of school board auditor.
I'll make a a motion in order to have a chance for discussion, somebody, that somebody can second if they want. I, I make a motion that we do not discuss action to issue a request for proposal for the position of school board auditor.
Second. Not to even want to go on RFP is what your motion is, you don't want RFP.
So is that saying we don't want a board auditor?
That's, that's, that's what I'm saying at this time, yes.
Nikki and David, Billis and mine, yes. Well, I would like to again say I think it's important that we have a board auditor. We are responsible for the taxpayers' money. The statute allows us to have a board auditor who reports to us for a week. I have a number of findings that I will pursue on my own. Should we not have a board auditor, but I cannot, I cannot I know you're an ex-supervisor and whatever, but I'm telling you it's important. It is, especially for us. However, um, there is a motion and a second on the floor not to issue a request for proposal for position of school board auditor.
Kathy, I would, I would say this, um, I would, I would say that I agree that, that, that bringing more audit oversight into certain aspects of the district, I'm, I'm in favor of, but uh, since our last meeting, I spent some time with finance discussing the details of what the auditor general does when he's here ten months out of the year. And I'm satisfied in a general oversight way that, that we have good, good accountability. It's been like that for years here, I mean, not just the last few, it stretches back, I think, you know, probably a dozen or so, um, years, or maybe even longer, that, that we've had this kind of oversight from the, from the state. So, I, I certainly would be open, you know, down the road, looking at, um, areas in which we could contract the people for specific tasking. I just think from a general business standpoint, um, uh, I think we could be more targeted, more specific, and more impactful if we, if we hired auditors and contracted with auditors in a more specific, you know, detailed way, rather than just a general oversight, you know, a general job description, and had them sort of, you know, really broadly run around looking at these, and that just might be sense. Um, I agree that, that there is need for oversight at times in specific areas. I just think we can hire that, that in, in a different way, that, that's more controlled by the board, more answerable to the board, and, um, and more impactful. So, so that's where I am. And I think we would need to talk about that at the board, you know, um, on what those areas are, based on the findings you have. I mean, if you have legitimate findings, I want to see them, I want to know them. And so, you know, as those things come along, you know, I think certainly we have to do our due diligence to address them. So, thank you, that's, that's where I am.
Well, I, I think we need a board auditor, and that's how I'm gonna vote.
Can I call for a question?
Well, I'd like to say something if that's all right.
Well, I thought you did, but that's okay, go ahead.
I can only say once?
No, no, you can go on if you
Go ahead.
I'm done.
Question is called. All those in favor say of not, of not going out for an RFP for a board auditor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
No.
No. Motion to not have a board auditor anymore, Tarry's five zero.
Three two.
Three two, yeah, sorry. Thank you. Okay, that's it. Reports by board members. Terry, would you please start? Do you have anything to report?
Um, no ma'am, except I think all graduations were, were, uh, kudos to all the teachers and, and principals who work so hard. Um, thank you, board, for allowing me to call in. Um, I'm actually down in Orlando with, uh, my wife, and gonna be, uh, gonna be going through some Rosano training, so, um, thankful for that. Uh, just the folks need to know that this myth, that teachers get the summer off is a myth. Um, teachers are working, administrators are working, and, um, I just think, uh, good things going on, so thank you for allowing me to call in, thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome, sir, thank you. Mr. Buckles?
I pass.
I would like to say that I got to experience a great day at Jenkins last week with Feeding America. We fed a ton of our families, sent them home with groceries. I'm talking, wow, hundreds of people came and filled up bags of cheese, meat, vegetables. It was a lot of fun. Um, we're doing it June twenty fifth at Miller Intermediate at nine o'clock. Um, the department, the Northeast Florida Feeding America would love to come back to our schools. We partnered with them, they were really happy. Um, the community was happy, and, uh, we would, I'd love to s- thank all our volunteers. We had a lot of school employees that were very gracious to o- offer to help, so that was a great day, and it's a lot of fun, so, thanks. And we will see you June twenty fifth. Thanks.
I just would like to say that I really enjoyed all the graduation ceremonies. I thought they were all three wonderful. Um, Crescent City had a little bit of rain and a little bit of lightning, but other than that, it was great. Um, I've spent some time with some school teachers and, um, school board employees over the f- past few weeks. They don't get off during the summer. They're all still working, and they'll work throughout the summer. Um, at least they don't have to, you know, keep school board hours, school hours all the time, but they are working, and I just think we have the best bunch of teachers in, in the state. And that's all.
Yeah, I'll let go of that, Jane, I think we have teachers like nobody else, I really do. They're wonderful. I really have nothing to report. Um, I am in my journey towards becoming a bionic woman. I am now having my left shoulder replaced on July thirteenth, so I will be participating at our July fourteenth meeting by a telephone. Or I might show up, but I don't know about that.
Hey Kathy, pardon me, but didn't, didn't I say you were a potato head? Isn't that what it was?
Yes, I'm a potato head. Terry said I'm a potato head, but I prefer bionic woman, thank you very much.
Okay.
But anyway, David, who's not here, needs to kind of know that he's gonna be running the meeting. You hear that? You're gonna be running the next meeting, I won't be here.
I can do it, yeah.
Mr. Attorney?
Uh, so I attended the, uh, Florida School Board Attorneys Association meeting a few weeks ago in St. Augustine. A lot of things coming down the pipe legislatively. Um, the chairwoman has agreed to, um, have a workshop, so we can, um, communicate that in more detail. We're, uh, working on a presentation as we speak to, um, give the board a heads up, but, uh, there's always a lot of fun things, uh, happening in Tallahassee that affect us here locally. Uh, additionally, uh, you know, this time of year with, um, personnel matters are always, um, coming through, so, um, the administration are working on some things, uh, we'll be able to present to the board, uh, the next meeting, uh, but I'm working on the board's behalf, um, uh, for that. And, um, the real estate matter is still going forward. We have, um, two appraisals, uh, one from Mr. Pacetti in, um, St. Augustine, the other from Mr. Messer here locally, uh, on the Campbell Building.
That's, I'm sorry, appraisals?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, so that, that was the first step in the line of, uh, the sale of the Campbell Building was to get those appraisals, we have them, so the ball is, uh, moving forward, uh, for the sale, uh, in accordance with the direction from the board. Um, and otherwise, that, um, takes care of, um, what's happening on the, on the law side of things.
Thank you.
Okay, um, this was the paper with the article with, uh, Nikki taught about six thousand two hundred and fifty pounds of food came to Jenkins Middle School, and lots of people, nice article, they were very complimentary of, uh, Ms. Cummings, and I'm really proud to say that she works very hard at helping to feed the children of Putnam County. She's continually done that, and, and it's a wonderful cause. Unfortunately, we have children who are hungry, and to be able to feed them is a wonderful thing, and I think we're doing that at Miller Intermediate in July, right?
June twenty fifth.
June twenty fifth. Uh, I was out of town for this one, but I'll be there to help for that, that's really exciting. Um, also, at Interlocken High School this week, we have a one-week summer food camp program. It's designed to teach children ages eight to eleven and twelve to sixteen how to prepare healthy meals on a budget. I went out this morning and talked to the kids, and they have a full group, and kids are having fun, and this, uh, was created, um, by, uh, the president-elect of the Florida School Nutrition Association, who, uh, happens to be our Interlocken High School Food Service Manager, Michelle Fudo. She, along with Old City Inn's executive chef, Sam Easton, and Senior Solutions Director of Vintage Care of Palatka, Sharon Buck, they put this program together for one week, and the kids are cooking in the kitchen at Interlocken High School and learning, and they were having a great time. They talked about the, the chicken pasta that they made yesterday, and they were telling me all about it and how good it was, and so it, it's really neat to see those children there learning how to cook and how to do it on a budget. It was really interesting. So if you're, if you're interested, you can go out any day this week, and they'll be there cooking. Um, also, I would like, is Renee Huff, is she, Renee, if you would come up for a minute, Renee is Director of Career Tech, and I'd like her to just give you a brief report on the industry certification that has happened in our county this year with our high school students.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, this year we had, um, a several new industry certifications that, uh, that we added. Just to give you a little overview of the ones that were passed. At, um, Palatka High School, our agri-technology, we had seventeen that passed, twenty-six took the exam, and seventeen passed. In our automotive, we had seven students pass the, um, automotive, the student ASE certification, and four passed the, um, Florida Automobiles, um, certification. Our health science programs at Interlocken High School, on the Certified Medical Associate Assistant, we had four. And Palatka High School, we had fifteen tested and fifteen passed. Ms. Sharon Harris had a hundred percent. Um, Crescent City had six pass. Um, our CNA, we just received those results. We had four tested at Palatka High School and four passed. And the CNA at Crescent City, we had six tested and four passed. Our welding students, we had four at Palatka High and two at Crescent City that passed. This year, we added Adobe Photoshop with our digital photography, and we had four students take the exam and four students pass. The biomedical program, we added the base certification, and this is our first year of seniors with this program, and we had eight tested and eight passed. Um, our middle school, eighth graders are taking the, um, Microsoft Office two thousand and ten exams, and at Jenkins, we had three that passed the bundle. And, um, twenty-one were tested, and many of those students passed either one or two of the exams, but three actually passed the bundle, three out of five. At QI Roberts, we had eleven take the exam, and, um, three passed, um, the two, and two exams, and the rest of them passed one exam. So we really are working on our industry certifications. I'm waiting on the culinary report, that has not come down to us yet from, um, the restaurants for, um, that certification.
Renee, would you explain what industry certification means for our students?
When students, um, complete a program of study, which is usually three classes in a program of study, for instance, um, health science. They take health science one and two and allied health or nursing assistant, and the students pass the CMAA, that means they can leave us as seniors and go to work, and, and be a certified medical associate. And then they go into the nursing assistant program, and they take the CNA, they have two industry certifications that allow them to go from high school to work, and then the cer- industry certifications allow them extra, like some credit and points when they go into college, whether it be at, like, First Coast Technical, or into Saint John's in the nursing program. So the industry certification gives them chances and opportunities to go on and further in post-secondary, as well as go into the world of work.
That's wonderful.
It is, it's excellent. For those students that aren't going to college, or just aren't interested at this time, to know that they have a skill, they can go out and immediately get a job is wonderful, and we have more of that happening in Putnam County than most people realize. I recently took, uh, Terry Haddaway, who is the Public Relations Director at GP, to, uh, Palatka High School to Jan Boland's class, so he could see the performance by the students. He actually also brought an engineer from GP, one of their younger ones who came out of the University of Florida, and, uh, she was impressed with the program that they had, and the results of what the students were doing there. And, uh, Mr. Haddaway was so impressed, he pulled out the GP credit card, wanted to give us a donation, only we don't have that capability. So he's gonna work with us because he was very impressed. Also, we took, um, he and the engineer on a tour of the other facilities, Sharon's, Sharon's facilities, and, uh, he was just very impressed. He had no idea that we had that at Palatka High School, and I think that's the case in Putnam County. A lot of people don't realize what we have going on for our students at each of our high schools. So, I, I really think it's important that we celebrate their success, because it's our success, and know that they can go out in the world of work and get a job, it's really important.
And we have added the industry certification for our engineering program, and we hope next year that those students will be able to be ready to take that industry certification.
And that'll be very exciting. The piece that we don't have is construction, and that's why, um, Mr. Buckles has been working very hard with First Coast Technical to look at bringing them on board at our old Mosley. Um, we hope to get that done by December. The program that they will bring in construction will be for those high school students who are interested in participating, and certainly they'll be able to get industry certification there. They can offer it where I can. I can give them a space to provide it, but I can't afford the teachers and the equipment, because we don't get that kind of money from the state anymore. The state, uh, it used to be called the vocational program, now it's called career technical, and they don't support it quite the way they used to in the past, which is very unfortunate, but partnering with First Coast Technical will give us some new options for our students, and, um, I'm looking forward to that, hopefully, in December if all goes well.
We, we've gone to the governor's desk with it now, so it's up to him with what he does.
Yes, we've, we've asked for some funds to help us with that, and, um, they've done a great job with that, Southern Strategies, so we really appreciate their work. Um, I also wanted, uh, Helen Muir, our Assistant Superintendent for, uh, Curriculum and Instruction, just to come up and give you a, a brief report on summer school. We do have summer school, we're required to do that for third graders, and certainly we do also, uh, any seniors that didn't quite make it, and we provide that for them. Um, we don't get money from the state to do anything else during the summer, but we do provide that.
Well, we have currently two hundred and fifty third grade students throughout the district who are attending summer school, where they are gonna, where they are receiving intensive support for whatever their reading deficiency is. The goal, of course, is that those kids will be able to go on to fourth grade and to be successful. Um, our, the traditional summer school for secondary students, um, when I was a child, not that I ever went, but, um, was a classroom kind of situation where teachers actually taught students. What we offer in Putnam County through the support of Title VI is, um, at all three high schools and several of the middle schools, a credit recovery program. We have a program, uh, that's called Odyssey Ware, and what that enables students to do is take for whatever period of time it takes them to, to complete a half a credit, and, um, they work independently, and then they take the test under a teacher's supervision, and they can earn that half credit.
In whatever course they failed.
In whatever course they failed, and it's a, a wonderful program, because it has every course that Florida offers in the course code directory. So currently, we have, um, I'm trying to think, I got the, a list today. There's, um, Palatka High serving about forty a day, Interlocken about twenty-five, and Crescent City twenty students a day.
So does that include the seniors that did not make it and the underclassmen that failed?
And, well, basically, because we only, we have eighty-six seats.
Okay.
So, we, we're kind of
Rotating.
We're being very strategic. We have some students coming from eight to ten, some from ten to twelve, some from twelve to
I saw that schedule at Palatka High School.
But it's, it's really great, because it enables students who maybe didn't, um, for some reason or another, weren't quite able to make it, it gives them the opportunity to earn those credits, so they can graduate, so
Their diploma.
Yes, it's so important. And also, all students, this is for elementary parents, um, have the opportunity, if they have internet connection, ask your child to go on iReady, and that's available all summer, and, um, would be a really, really good plan to say twenty minutes, thirty minutes a day, if you're really gung ho, and read. The, um, program is self-paced and developmental, so if your child is excelling, great, let them excel more. If they need a little extra support, the program offers intervention, and it's not too much to ask for children to spend a half an hour a day. So if you have, do not know how to sign up, call your school, or call my office, and we will get you some little tutoring, so you can help your child continue to learn all summer.
Do you know, are any of our elementary libraries open in the summer that parents that don't have computers could take advantage of that? I, I don't know how that works.
Um, as far as I know, there are, there are none Um, as far as I know, there are, there are none, just because they're doing a lot of, um, maintenance kind of things in the summer. The libraries all have internet connections. McDonald's, if you have a computer, has internet connection.
That's the problem, though. A lot of them don't have.
Um, but, uh, the libraries do, and if...
That's great. I hope they'll take advantage of it.
And people are. I mean, because we can keep...
You can tell how many log on.
And so, just, I would just want anyone who didn't know about it to know about it now.
Thank you, Helen, very much. The last thing I have, um, we had been broadcasting the, uh, Palatka City Commission meetings and also, uh, Putnam County Commission meetings on our YouTube, uh, space, and we've had a few complaints that, you know, I, I don't know what the complaints are. If you go to YouTube, you have to click on it to watch it. It doesn't automatically come up, so you don't have to watch them. We have been providing that as, um, just a service and inter-agency cooperation. Um, there was an article about it. If, if you saw it in Saturday, June sixth, Palatka Daily News. Um, and I know that the county is trying to get their YouTube channel up and running so that they can also, uh, do, uh, the video there. Um, I, I guess really what I want to know from the board, the article says we stopped doing it. We really didn't. I, I really needed to bring that to the board to, to find out. Do you, would you rather that we didn't provide it? Should we take it off our YouTube? Do you want to keep it on the YouTube? What, what's your desire?
I don't see a problem with having it on YouTube.
I don't either. No, it doesn't cost us. It's free. At least until they get theirs up and running. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you, and that's the last thing I have today. Thank you very much.
Okay, before we adjourn, I'd just like to say one thing. Apparently Rhonda is watching or getting texts. I already see, received an email and then a text like this. She's very upset with me. Apparently she handed out the information I'm requesting during the State of the District workshop that we have in her pack of papers. And that's what she said. I, I haven't seen them. I apologize. If I was wrong, I am human, so I do make mistakes, if in fact I made one. So whoever texted, or if you're watching, I apologize. And please text my apology. There being no further business to come before this board, we're adjourned.